I have a second.
Second.
Look, Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, certification resolution. I'm gonna ask everybody to certify. Whereas the Carroll County Board of Supervisors convened a closed session this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and on the motion to closing meeting in accordance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas Section 2.2-3711D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board of Supervisors that such closed session was conducted in conformity with Virginia law when under closed session under A1 and A8, therefore it be resolved that the Carroll County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session to which the certification applies, and only such business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed session was convened, heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting to which the certification applies. Mr. Early?
I so certify.
Mr. Collins?
I so certify.
Mr. Bryant?
I so certify.
Mr. Horton?
I so certify.
Mr. Moore?
I so certify.
And I so certify. Okay, next on agenda is Robinson Farmer Cox.
Members, thanks for having me. I'm filling in for Gordon Jones tonight. He was sick over the weekend and still sick today, so he asked if I would come up here and meet with you. You've got two handouts in front of you. One is the audit report, the actual financial document that contains all of your financial statements, and then there's an audit presentation, a smaller handout. And I'm gonna kinda walk you through that audit presentation. The first thing I'll tell you is you did receive what we call an unqualified opinion on your financial statements, which means we believe the financial statements are materially correct. You also received a clean opinion on your government auditing standards opinion, which basically is a high-level review of your compliance with things like procurement, state law, that sort of thing, and also an unqualified, which is the best opinion you can get on your federal expenditures, which means we didn't see you spending any grant funds in an inappropriate manner, at least your federal grant funds. If you go to the audit presentation, and I will tell you my contact information is on the front as well as Gordon's, so if you do have any questions, you can call us or email us tomorrow. Starting on page two, we have our communication to those charged with governance, and this is a required letter that we give to you. If we had any problems during the audit, they'd be reported to you here. We did not, so you get the boilerplate letter. This does talk about some of the major estimates in the financial statements such as pension liabilities and post-employment benefit liabilities that you have, so you can kinda read it as you go through the audit report, just to let you know that all those numbers in there are not necessarily nailed down. We ultimately don't know what your pension liabilities are gonna be because we don't know how long your employees are gonna stay on those pensions once they retire, and so that winds up being an estimate. On page five and six, we have our audit recommendations from the audit. The only two of note that I think are important to go over with you on page six, there's one under CSA that says Child Services Act, and what we found when we were here is that you spend money under this program, then you seek reimbursement monthly. The department had forgotten, the CSA program had forgotten to seek reimbursement for their May expenditures. It was called, they sought reimbursement, and we're reimbursed. The reason that's important is because the state has a hard deadline, end of September every year. If you don't file a reimbursement request by the end of September, that money's lost. So fortunately, I think we were able to catch that early enough that they got it filed and got your money back, but we want them to have a process in place to make sure they submit those reimbursement requests. The other one was, there were a couple of bank accounts opened by the school board that didn't go through the treasurer's office, and in the state of Virginia, you're required to have all your bank accounts. There are a few exceptions, but most of your bank accounts need to go through the treasurer's office, so we've asked that they move those bank accounts down to the treasurer's office, so that just gives another set of eyes looking at the transactions as they come through. The other comments in there are pretty normal comments for a local government. I won't go over those unless somebody sees something they'd like to discuss. On page seven, I'll start walking you through, just to highlight a really high-level overview of the numbers. At the very top, you see something called a condensed statement of net position, and that position is really if you sold off all your assets and paid off all your liabilities, our best guess at what you'd wind up with at the end. And you can see your total net position is $53 million. That's up from back in 2019, 2020, and you see down just a little bit from the prior year, but still a pretty healthy balance. That current ratio we're showing at 31, if it's ever below 1, you're insolvent, so 31 is a good current ratio to have in place. Down below that, we see a condensed balance sheet for governmental funds, and that's almost the same thing except we take out long-term assets and long-term liabilities. So we're just looking at current assets, things that are gonna be cash or paid off within a year, so things that you're, you know, we're not gonna show this building as a current asset, you're probably not gonna sell it within a year. You can see total fund balance for all your governmental funds stood at $39 million. The unassigned portion of that was $23 million, $23.5 million, down a little bit from last year as you've shifted more money to set aside for some capital projects. Total unassigned fund balance at the very bottom is 27 million, I'm sorry, 27%. Unassigned fund balance is 27% of net government expenditures for the year, and when we take net government expenditures, your expenditures plus the school board, less the transfer from you to the school board. And what GFOA, with the recommended minimum level for unassigned fund balance as a percent of expenditures, the minimum is 16.6%. So you're above that, not way above it certainly, but you're above that slightly. The next page, page eight, as I was putting together this presentation with Gordon today, he was working from home and kinda helping me, something really jumped out at me. Total revenues have been growing at a compound annual growth rate of about 4.3%, and that's the growth rate column over to the far right. Operating expenditures have been growing at an annualized growth rate of 1%. When you consider debt service, and you add debt service, which has been going down over the past couple of years, those total expenditures for the general fund have only been growing at a quarter of 1% a year, so that's an extremely low growth rate for expenditures. The revenue growth rate is expected. I would also normally expect a 2% to 3% at least growth rate expenditures. So I was really surprised, and we double-checked those numbers over and over today, but expenditures just have not increased. You guys have done a good job of holding those in line. And ultimately, that's why you're seeing your cash, your fund balance go low. And you can see it down at the bottom, ending fund balance for the general fund stood at $32.6 million, the ending cash balance 27.4, and there's normally a difference between the two because you have your receivables at any point in time normally outweigh your payables. At the very bottom, ending fund balances percent of operating expenditures 37%, ending cash balances percent of operating expenditures 31%. The growth you see in that net government operating expenditures, the growth you see there is primarily school board. Like I said, we take the school board plus county, minus the transfer between the two, so the growth you see in those net government operating expenditures primarily is school board. Page nine and 10, I'm just graphing out some of this information for you. The one thing that jumps out to me on page nine, pretty consistent in terms of your different revenue sources and how much of your budget they make up, the one difference there is intergovernmental revenue, the state and federal aid. You can see back in 19, it made up 26% of your general fund budget. This year, your general fund revenues in 2023, 29%, and that's all primarily gonna be due to COVID CARES money, ARPA money that you receive. We expect that to go away, that's gonna normalize. General fund expenditures, the next page, page 10. Page 11, I'm just graphing out your major revenues for you. Those can be your property taxes, your other local taxes, and then intergovernmental revenue. That second year of property taxes, you went to twice-year collections there, so you got a bump, one-time shot, back in 2020. The intergovernmental revenue, CRF funds in 2021 were $5.8 million, CARES money was $3 million in '22, and then 3.8 million in '23. So all told, about $12 million in funding to the local government related to the coronavirus. The school board in 2023 got about $4 million in federal funding related to coronavirus, so that money's not, obviously that money's not gonna be here in two, three, four years. And after 2008, when we had the Great Recession, what we saw was a real drop-off in federal funding, particularly for school boards. They got a big ramp up right after the Great Recession and then the drop-off, and it took years for their federal funding to reach back to the level it was prior to the Great Recession. We'd expect to see something similar post-COVID as well. The next thing we graph out on page 12 are just your general fund expenditures by fiscal year. And then we've got a debt summary on page 13. Debt per capita for the county at the end of '23, right around $2,600. That's that blue line that's highlighted blue for you. We don't have state numbers. The state numbers, the last one we have from '21, debt per capita in '21 for counties in the state of Virginia, $6,500. Now, Northern Virginia skews that a little bit. If we were to take Northern Virginia out of the mix, I think that average would be closer to about $4,000. Debt as a percentage of operating and debt service expenditures at the end of the year, 7.7%. Typically like to see that at 10% or less, but at the same time, if you have relatively low debt levels and your payoff is high, that, we don't have a problem with that, and you do have relatively, relatively low debt. Finally, and say this, in case you're having sleep tonight, a couple accounting standards in the back on pages 14 and 15, that the county will be implementing over the next, 14, 15, 16, I think, that the county will be implementing over the next couple of years. Just in case you're interested in that sort of thing, we'd like to at least make you aware of those changes that are coming in accounting standards, and I can tell you, we had a lot of, a lot of changes in accounting standards in the past two or three years, just really started to slow down, which is a welcome change. Overall, the audit went well. The county's in good shape. Like I said, we're in a weird time post-COVID. We had a lot of unanticipated funding. How that all plays out in the next three, four, or five years is really anybody's guess, and we're dealing with inflation too, so, which was probably created somewhat by a lot of that funding. So how it all plays out in the next several years, we just don't know. But you're in a good position.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I'll stop there and try to answer any questions you want.
You wanna have any questions? Thank you, sir.
You're absolutely welcome.
Appreciate it.
My contact information is on the front page.
Okay.
Don't hesitate. You've got any questions, give me a call or shoot me an email, happy to help in any way I can, and don't worry about getting a bill the next day. We're here to serve you guys, so we'll do anything we can to help you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on agenda is Freeze Fire Department. I don't believe anyone came. Mr. Limeberry, okay? So we'll skip, go on to the next item, which should be Regional Library Update.
Thank you Chairman Dixon. Appreciate the Carroll County welcome. I'd like to recognize some Galax Carroll Regional Library Board members who are attending the meeting tonight. We have Chairman Lee Chafee, Kathy Parks, and a brand-new trustee, Jamie Edwards. But in your packets, you'll see the FY23 Galax Carroll Regional Library infographic. This information was collected from the regional library's FY2023 bibliostat report, and overall, 2023 was definitely an excellent year of growth for the Galax Carroll Regional Library. Over the last four months, we've had some important transitions at the regional library. In December, we upgraded to a new online catalog system from book systems called Atrium. Staff and patrons alike are continuing to learn to work the new system, but we have made great strides in the last few months. In December, Mimi Leonard was hired as the new Galax Public Library Branch Manager, and after Ms. June Pike retired in January, Ms. Emily Hubbard was hired as the new Carroll County Public Library Branch Manager, and I would like to thank Mr. Moore for attending an open house at the library, really did appreciate that. But on the infographic, I wanna point out we've got a library website, Facebook, and Instagram, social media accounts, and by all means, please take a look at those. If you're on social media, we're trying to really push our programs and the things that we can offer the community. In fiscal year 2023, the library offered 334 programs. That was up 213 programs from fiscal year 2022. And in 2023, we had 8,253 in-person attendees, so people are really hungry, I think, to get out after the COVID epidemic and be with other people. But in FY2022, we'd only had 2,189 in-person attendees, so that was up a little over 6,000 people. The regional library provides free notary services to Carroll County citizens. We're providing, the libraries are serving as passport acceptance agencies, and in fiscal year 2023, we accepted 98 passport applications. So that's a wonderful service that we can provide to the community. I know there are a lot of folks in Carroll County and the Twin Counties who are interested in family history, and we provide Ancestry Library Edition. That's in library use only, but all you need to do is come inside the library and you can access those resources. Also available online, and this is something that you do not have to come to the library for, it's the Historic Carroll News and Galax Gazette newspapers. So if you're interested in some family members, you can go on the library website under Local History and find those digitized newspapers. So if Mr. Early wanted to look up his grandfather, or Mr. Dixon wanted to look up his dad, you can search, do a simple search by name and find articles where their names had appeared. It's really interesting, and you can do that at home, eating breakfast in your pajamas. So that's a big plus. We also offer overdrive digital eBooks and e-audiobooks and e-magazines for patrons who really want to be more digital, but we still have a lot of folks out there who are hungry to hold a book, so we are offering both, digital and physical materials. Library visits in fiscal year 2023, we had 77,354 visits. That was an increase from FY22 of 19,667 visits. Items borrowed went up, 9,960 items to 100,880. New cards issued from, in fiscal year 2022, we issued 716 cards, and in fiscal year 2023, we issued 1,165 cards. Our borrower account for fiscal year 2023 did go down. We have to purge our files every year per the Library of Virginia to keep a clean database, and so we've probably got a borrower account at this time a little more than 11,454 borrowers, patrons. Website visits went up in fiscal year 2023 to 38,976, and I know that the county has done some, written some letters for the, the wire, what is it, the V? I shouldn't have tried to think of it off the top of my head, but we have written letters in support of broadband expansion in Carroll County, and we're still serving a group of people who come to the library to use the computer. In fiscal year 2022, we had 5,390 public computer use sessions, and in 2023, that increased a little over 2,000 uses to 7,507. We're growing our Facebook account, we've got 2,052 followers, 433 Instagram followers. We did roughly 8,743 reference transactions. Our summer reading participants almost doubled from fiscal year '22 to fiscal year 2023. We had 770 youth-through-adult summer reading program participants. We had 25,754 wireless user sessions and 434 meeting room uses, but really, the library has something for everyone. We've got story times on Thursdays for pre-K attendees and parents. We have the Teen Cold Case, where teens work together to think critically and solve mysteries. The Youth Book Club, this was a program that was requested by patrons for elementary school-aged children. They read and discuss age-appropriate books with Youth Services Coordinator Jesse Campbell. We have a Teen Book to Movie Club, a Lego Club, a Family Game Night, and this is a time for families to come together to meet up and play board games. Parents can meet parents, kids can meet kids. We also have the Family Share Program hosted at the library, and Stephen Turner has been a wonderful volunteer to help facilitate that. We also can offer banjos, books, and more, and this is a library outreach program for citizens in nursing homes with music, paperback books, donated magazines, and donated puzzles. And at the Carroll Library, we still have our puzzle and paperback exchange ongoing. We're planning, we're thinking about organizing a jam session at the Carroll Library one time a month for about an hour, hour and a half, to encourage young people to play music. I know there's jam sessions in the, or jam programs, Junior Appalachian Musicians programs in the area, and hopefully some adults will come, and that will offer an intergenerational program. We're also super excited about the recent launch of the Dolly Parton Imagination Library of the Twin Counties, covering Carroll, Galax, and Grayson to promote youth literacy in our communities, and I would just like to invite each of you to visit the library and apply for a library card if you don't already have one, like our Facebook page, our Instagram page. But looking ahead, I wish to close by expressing the desire of the library to be an active Carroll County Department, helping to meet county goals, and I would love to talk with any of you about how the library can continue to help meet community needs. But if you have any questions about any of our statistics or programs, I'm happy to answer them.
Anybody have any questions, Ms. Moore?
I'd just like to thank you for all you do. Very busy.
Thank you so much. Yes, sir, we're very busy and appreciate you all. Thank you.
Yeah, we thank you.
Thank you.
Everyone here, what you do, appreciate you coming. Okay, next, Fire and Rescue Update. Mr. Bergeron? Doing good, you?
Doing all right, thank you.
Good, how are you?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
All right, you?
Yeah, sir.
I understand you have several agenda items to go, so I will make this brief. We also have in our EMT class kickoff tonight back at the station, so I'm gonna get back down there. What I handed you all is just a brief summary of the monthly emergency services reports we've submitted to date, and what I wanted to highlight out of that summary are community-focused events. As been mentioned twice up here, we're kinda seeing the evolution of a true post-COVID or post-pandemic time now, and from the last, probably two or three months of last year into the first part of this year, our stakeholders and counterparts, we were probably at the pre-pandemic norm, if you will, for our meeting trainings and getting out and involved. if you will, for our meeting trainings and getting out and involved with the community and other local events. So if you'll just look through there with me, our training and highlights, we've been very busy. Late fall of last year, we did our First County Supported Firefighter One class. That put seven volunteer firefighters back into the volunteer ranks. Tonight, as I mentioned, we're doing our First County Supported EMTB. We allotted for 15 slots. We started with 15, a full roster. Tonight, we're sitting with 13. We had two that had to shuffle around, but we do have those slots filled. Of those, five have reached out directly to Piper's Gap Volunteer Rescue to be affiliated and volunteer there. We've had three or four for Laurel, and others are either volunteer fire members that want to cross train or are looking at employment with full-time for Carroll Fire and Rescue. So that is a plus to the system to try to be able to build our own and support that training. Also, Piper's Gap recently, they hosted in conjunction with Aircare Baptist an advanced airway class for all county providers. I mention that because that's a, it was a very advanced meaning, using some form of adjunct to help a patient breathe. But what they brought in, the props, they use that with pig tracts, so they have to deal with soft tissue and learn how to manipulate those airways, and that's something that's not been around too often. So we thank Piper's Gap for hosting that. If you come down, the Lamsburg Community Center, we applied forward and were awarded a grant for an emergency shelter generator. We're approximately halfway through that right now. We look to close that no later than July, but we're already on schedule for the installation of the generator and the transfer switch for that facility, for the community center down there. And our community planning, we're going to host in eight, or excuse me, in May. It's called a mobilizing community, or faith-based community organizations training. That's how we're going to reach out to our churches and other faith-based organizations to pre-plan and respond to and post-disaster for their help and build that community relationship. We met with Laurel Meadows in Laurel Fork to do their review of their annual emergency action plan. On the backside, you'll see that we've had several of our fire rescue staff working with the high school seniors to meet their CPR requirement for graduation. We also participated with Carroll County Public Schools in their safety audit, their annual walkthrough and reviews of those action plans for those facilities. And then recently, as of Friday, we participated Carroll Fire Rescue, Piper's Gap, Volunteer Rescue, Galax Grayson, and Aircare Baptist. We worked in conjunction with the Healthcare Excellence Program. That was through, through school districts Carroll, Grayson, and Galax, in conjunction with WCC at Crossroads. And these were a select group of high school students that had some form of medical or EMS goal career in mind. They spent nine Fridays and culminated with a demonstration from emergency services and critical care. And I believe there had a total of 20 students from all three localities. We have been very busy. We're on slate to have several other community-focused projects throughout the year. We have several action plans and the county's emergency operations plan that have either been revised or up for revision to include Levels Creek Dam down in Cana. So we've been very busy. But like I said, I just want to do a brief overview. I appreciate your all's time. I'll happily answer any questions. If you don't have any tonight, you're welcome to reach out to our office, and we will be glad to talk with you.
Want to have any questions for Mr. Bergeron?
All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you for coming, we appreciate it. Okay, next on the agenda, citizens time, everybody sign up, Crystal? Okay. All right, next on the agenda, approval of the amendments, which will be the amended minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended minutes.
Okay, have a motion to, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, start the vote with Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That brings us to the consent calendar. You have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make that motion.
Motion on Mr. Horton, do you have a second?
A second.
Take him on Mr. Moore, start the vote with Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, that brings us down to invoices, entertain a motion to approve them together, or do you want to separate one and two?
I'll make a motion to approve the invoices for February 19th, 2024, and March 4th, 2024.
Okay, have a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, start the vote with Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Okay, that's going to bring us to new business. We have a resolution from AEP, about AEP, and I'm going to read it. It's a resolution of concern, whereas the Carroll County Board of Supervisors unanimously agree that the citizens of Carroll County have received Appalachian Power Company bills that have caused financial hardship, and whereas the Carroll County Board of Supervisors citizens are largely made up of those on a fixed income, exasperating this effect on the community, and whereas Parkdale Mills, one of the county's largest employees, has recently shut down due to the unaffordable electricity bills, which left hundreds of citizens unemployed, and whereas Carroll County has received record-high bills for several months in a row, causing a dramatic increase in the cost of providing numerous services to the community and therein causing hardship on the county's financial health, and now therefore be resolved that the Carroll County Board of Supervisors petitions our elected state officials to prepare a plan to address these concerns and provide immediate relief. Adopted this fourth day of March 2024, we're all entertain a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion, Mr. Collins, do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, start the vote with Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next, we have a proclamation for Emergency Management Week, and I'll read this as well. Proclamation for Emergency Management Professionals Week, whereas the emergency management team of Carroll County in the Commonwealth of Virginia worked tirelessly behind the scenes to create a safer, stronger, and more resilient environment in the midst of natural disasters, pandemics, civil unrest, terrorism, and other man-made and natural threats and hazards. And whereas every emergency begins and ends locally, and whereas emergency managers are considered vital public service to and between essential service that assists Carroll County to prepare for, respond to, and recover from emergencies, and whereas emergency managers develop emergency plans and procedures, organize training, including first responders, community partners, manage, lead, and provide skills and resources to minimize the impact of disasters, work with the state and federal agencies to find the most effective methods of disaster recovery, to increase safety and security, as well as build business continuity, and whereas the role of emergency managers in creating a safer, more resilient community is more important than ever. Now therefore, the Carroll County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim March 18th through 21st, 2024, as Emergency Management Professionals Week. Carroll County encourages all citizens to honor the Carroll County Emergency Management Team and to recognize their service behind the scenes and commitment to the health, safety, and welfare of all who live and visit in Carroll County. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion on Mr. Horton, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, start the vote with Mr. Moore?
Question first?
Sorry?
Mr. Chairman, is there a reason the week is only four days?
Do you know, Ms. Adams? Okay.
Should it go through the 22nd?
We can make that adjustment in, in your motion, if you want to, or do the motion to, with that change. Is that correct, Mr. Durbin?
Or you can make it to 17th through the 23rd, this Sunday through Saturday?
Yeah, or at least five days anyway, the five workdays, but right now it's only four.
You can, you can amend it.
Okay. So you want to amend your motion to change the date? Or do you want to make, who made the motion?
I made the motion.
You want to change your motion?
Yes, I'd like to amend my motion to change the dates of the week from the 17th to the 23rd.
Okay. Have amended the motion, second?
Second.
Okay, is that all you got, Mr. Early?
Yep.
Okay, start the vote with you?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, that brings us to another proclamation, which is MS Week. Okay, whereas multiple sclerosis is a chronic, often disabling disease of the central nervous system that affects 400,000 people in the United States, and whereas it typically strikes young adults between ages 20 and 40, while in their prime of life, women are more likely to have multiple sclerosis by about three to one. Symptoms can begin as simply tingling and progressing to near paralysis, and whereas March of 2024 is Multiple Sclerotic Education and Awareness Month. It is important for better education and awareness of multiple sclerosis so that this victim can lead more productive and satisfying lives to benefit themselves, their caregivers, and families, and overall community. And whereas MS is a disease that only affects a person with the condition, but also greatly impacts, impacts their family, friends, and community, and whereas the exact cause of MS is still unknown, there is no known cure, and whereas the symptoms of MS may be mild, such as numbness in the limbs, or severe, such as powerless or loss of vision, and whereas every hour of every day, someone is newly diagnosed with MS. And whereas the Multiple Sclerotic Alliance of Virginia, MSAV, provides programs and services for anyone in Virginia whose life has been affected by MS, and now therefore be resolved that the Carroll County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaim the month of March 2024 as Multiple Sclerotic Education and Awareness Month in the County of Carroll and the Commonwealth of Virginia, and encourage all citizens to recognize the importance of raising awareness of multiple sclerosis. Do I have a motion to, that proclamation?
Everybody make a motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Start the vote with Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to committee appointments. If anyone wants to...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for Christopher Smith on the Rec Commission Board.
Okay, have a motion for Chris Smith, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, start the vote with Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Anyone else want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Howard Mayo for the Recreation Commission Board.
Okay, have a motion for Mr. Mayo, have a second?
Second.
Okay, start the vote with Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Anyone have any more motions for?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Ronnie Mankins to the Rec Board.
Okay, have a nomination for Mr. Mankins, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, start the vote with Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Therefore, still open for nominations?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Travis Austin to the Rec Department Board.
Okay, have a motion for Travis Austin, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, start the vote with Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Do we have any more motions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Greg Bun to the Recreation Department Board.
Okay, nomination for Mr. Bun, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, start the vote with Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Okay, do we have any more?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Joe Terry to the Rec Department Board.
Okay, have a nomination for Mr. Terry, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, start the vote with Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Another nomination, I'd like to nominate Mr. Chris Goode to the Rec Department Board.
Nomination for Chris Goode, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, start the vote with Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Do we have any more committee appointments tonight? Okay, if not, that brings us to quarterly appropriation. Entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve the quarterly appropriation.
Okay, have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, start the vote with Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, that brings us to... Do I have a motion for the, to approve the 2025 budget calendar, 2024 budget calendar?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve that budget calendar with the correction of the meeting on 3/25/24 to be moved to 6 o'clock and be full board.
Okay, have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Start the vote with Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, that brings us to old business. Do we have any old business? Okay, we'll go to board member comments, we'll start with Mr. Early?
Uh, just a question, the Lego League, I think they have a trip coming up out west. Do you all know anything about that? No? Well, I think they're looking for support from the county. I'm not sure how much, but perhaps we could entertain that at our next meeting. Perhaps Mr. Watson would look into that and see exactly what it is they're asking for. Other than that, I really don't have anything. I appreciate, again, everything that everyone does in this building and outside of the building, fire, rescue, just all the people that give time to our county and make it a better place to live.
Thank you, Mr. Early, Mr. Collins?
I don't have anything other than just to say thank you for all the work that's being done. It's, I appreciate the board and all the work that you're doing, and just, it's good to work together.
Thank you, Mr. Collins, Mr. Bryant?
Guys, appreciate the staff and Mr. Watson, Mr. Durbin, and all the board, and just thank, thank everybody for working together good.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant, Mr. Horton?
I just want to reiterate everything everybody's already said, but I do appreciate everything the Fire Department and Mr. everything that the Fire and Rescue's been doing for the county. We've got a lot of great things happening in the county. I think me and Mr. Bryant both have been in a learning mode here recently, but I appreciate all the support from everybody here on the board, and I like the direction the county's going in. Just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horton, Mr. Moore?
Um, I'm going to do something different. I want to make a motion to approve the tax levy, same as it was last year for 2025.
Okay.
59 cent for real estate and personal property, same.
59 cent for real estate, personal property, same. We have a motion to keep the tax rate the same this year, have a second?
Sir?
Okay, second, Mr. Early, we'll start the vote with, any discussion? Okay, we'll start the vote with you, Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
All right.
Okay, Mr. Moore?
Um, other than that, I just want to thank staff and everybody for all their hard work and what they're doing. It was good to get a good audit report and good to have the update at the library, and just thank, thank the board and staff and everybody that's making that happen, and I will say it's good to see you, Justin.
Glad to have you.
I second that.
Yeah.
And that's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I just want to thank the staff and everything you do, and all the people in the county, the interviews we went through tonight, and appreciate the people in the community that's supplying and making a difference. Carroll Fire and Rescue, I appreciate what they do, Portia Sheriff's Office and our volunteers and the library, it's good to hear an update from them as well. And I do hope, I'm glad we passed the resolution. I know Mr. Early was at the Hillsland Meeting too, for Appalachian Power. I'm hoping our state officials will listen to us to do something about the high-power I'm hoping our state officials will listen to us to do something about the high-power bills. But, and I want to thank Mr. Horton for coming tonight. His mom's in the hospital, so I'd ask you that you keep your prayers for her and his family. And of course, we ask prayers for Trace and his family and Tiff, as she's still fighting. And do have a benefit on April 7th at the VFW for Tiff. So we'll get some more information after that, but we appreciate anybody that comes out. And anybody that wants to help, please let us know. And that's all I have. Mr. Watson?
I don't have anything tonight.
Okay, Mr. Durbin?
No comments this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Informational package. Okay, with that being said, I'll ask for a motion for adjournment?
Make that motion.
Motion, Mr. Collins, have a second?
Second.
Okay, start the vote with Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes.